You're talking, obviously. We're gonna start with, as we usually do, a moment of silence. I'll have to pledge the allegiance. So let's please take a moment of silence. Thank you. And hopefully you have a flag somewhere you can pledge to, and we'll start to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of Statute of America.
To the Republic like for which it stands. One nation, one nation. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Garza.
Chairman Williams? Vice Chairwoman Kiefer? Mr. Demaria?
Here.
Mr. Albrecht?
Here.
Mrs. Seber?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Stevens? Mrs. Stevens?
Here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garza. Before we get started, I'm gonna read something that I typed up to talk about why we're having this meeting virtually. So just please bear with me. Good evening, and thank you to everyone joining us. I appreciate you taking your time to listen in. We are holding this meeting virtually tonight due to the unprecedented public emergency due to COVID-19 virus. We are legally able to hold this meeting in part due to the advisory opinion issued by Virginia Attorney General Herring on March 20th, 2020. The opinion notes that Virginia law allows public bodies to conduct meetings electronically during a public emergency if the purpose of the meeting is to address the emergency. The opinion reinforces that such meetings still adhere to the mandates of public accountability and transparency, including providing public access, proper public notice, publicly available agenda, roll call votes, and having a quorum of members. The opinion's conclusion delineates that Virginia Code, Section 2.2-37082, Section A3, permits public bodies that are unable to assemble in person because of the unique characteristics of COVID-19 to meet electronically to make decisions that must be made immediately, and where failure to do so could result in irrevocable public harm. Finally, Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2503, mandates that the school board shall honor before the first day of April of each year the parents submit a budget to the city council. Thus, we are eating to fulfill our statutory mandate to approve and submit a budget and to address the public emergency. Thank you for indulging me in that. Next on the agenda is the consent motion. For the consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
I got it. Sir, I make the motion that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda. Presented. I don't think we modified it. As presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Demaria and a second by Mr. Seber, I think, that the school board of the City of Manassas.
Stevens.
Ms. Stevens. Thank you. By Ms. Stevens, that the school board of the City of Manassas approves the consent agenda as presented. Now, usually I would say all in favor, all opposed, but because this is a virtual meeting, each vote must be done by roll call. So before each vote, I'm gonna ask Mr. Garza to be the roll call. You can say yes or no, a or nay, whatever you prefer. Ms. Garza, may I please do a roll call for the vote?
Chairman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer? Mr. Demaria?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht? Mrs. Seber?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it, six zero. Next on the agenda is the action agenda. We'll start with financing operations, FY 2021, 2025, CIP and five-year forecast. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evenings, school board members. I hope you can all hear me. Please, let me know if you can. Need to move closer to the microphone and speak louder. Okay. So I would like to, like to do Section B of the agenda first, and then we'll roll into the CIP and five-year forecast. If that's okay. On your, on your screen, before I get started, I just want you to know that we're, we're going with data that we have received by the General Assembly adopted budget, which was done on March 12. There's been a lot of conjecture. A lot of things have happened between March 12 and today. A lot of it is rumor and conjecture that we're dealing with tonight about tax or what is, what was adopted by the General Assembly. At some point in time, some of the news reports and rumors or whatever will come true. I don't know what will end up happening with the governor for the General Assembly. We will have to come back and make, or we may have to come back and change the budget if we adopt at some point in time. We don't know. We don't have any information at this time. So in front of you tonight is the additional revenue that we have over the governor's budget, over what was proposed by the Indian Superintendent's budget of February, I think it was 12th or 13th. So right now, we're showing that we're going to get $827,489 more from the General Assembly adopted budget than what was in the governor's budget. Out of that amount, we're proposing that we take $218,000 for increased employer contribution that we talked about in our last budget work session for health insurance. With that, the life insurance rate through DRS has also been updated since the superintendent proposed budget. That's roughly, it's $18,882. As a result of these changes, there are some additional taxes of $7,775. That leaves us with $582,801. Out of these remaining funds, we went back to our unmet needs and some concerns that have been brought forward from our staff. And we have brought forward these following things to be able to balance the budget and expend the funds that were, that were over and above what was adopted, what was proposed by the governor. Where, you see the five or six things there. Primarily, some of the big things that we should be discussing would be teacher coverage for planning period. We had conversation in our last budget work session about that. But this is salary infringement for teacher coverage during their planning period so the substitute not be available. If teachers are on their planning period, they would come in and, and cover for that class. I think it's $25 an hour. I think $25, $25 an hour. And so that's what, just for the quick. The next one is one of our primary unmet needs that we couldn't put in the superintendent's proposed budget due to funding was Mets and Mayfield Councilor. We'd have a counselor at each, an additional counselor at each school. Another concern that was brought forward was the need for an additional plumber for the division. And we have a school psychologist that we would be placing at Osborne High School. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's not Osborne. It would be Dean Elementary School. And finally, since we don't know what's going to happen with the coronavirus and the effect that it's going to have on our revenues in FY 21, and due to the damages being done to the economy and what may happen with sales tax, we're also proposing that we set aside $100,000 additional funds and contingency reserve to, and just to offset any unknown revenue shortfall that may happen because of the economic issues being caused by the coronavirus. So in total, our school board, we, we looked at these requests. You've seen this slide before showing where the requests were from the schools and the department and how the budget has, has changed over time. From the superintendent's proposed budget all the way down to what we have tonight, we're hopeful that we will have an approved adopted budget of $109,589,574. This is the operating fund of the budget. This is not the debt service fund. This is not the CIP. This is not food service fund. These are the operating fund for the day-to-day operations of the school division, which would total $109,589,574. What's included in the budget? These slides before these were from the superintendent's proposed budget. We're putting in funding or we are honoring almost all. That is 8.4% of all the requests that were sent in from the school and the principals and directors for materials and supplies, purchase services, and professional development to meet the needs of our students. We have reallocated all and repurposed division-wide teaching positions to meet the evolving needs of our students. Add social studies teacher and a science teacher at Mets. Add two living teachers and one, 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 one-time graduation coordinator and one counselor at Osborne High School. We've also added a psychologist and a workforce development specialist at Osborne. Establish established two division-wide TTE teachers, one additional counselor at Mayfield, and one at that. Additional compensation to teachers for class coverage during the planning period when no substitute may be obtained. Strategic Plan Goal Number Two, providing a quota cost of living increase for all salary scales. Provides a step increase for all staff, all staff currently at the top of their respective scale. It also provides for administrative salary scale adjustment. Strategic Goal Number Three, add a division-wide school nurse. Add a division-wide school translator. Add one position to support professional development and provide full-time SRO coverage at both Mayfield and Mets. Strategic Plan Goal Number Four, increase by a half of an FTE, administrative position in the transportation department, and add one additional plumber to the maintenance department. We still have, even though we have made great strides in this budget, we also still have some, a lot of unfunded needs. One of our primary concerns is the full BPI funding to continue the program like it's been structured in Manassas City for the last four or five years. And still, it's not done funded. We will have the BPI program this year, but it will not be operating as it has been in the past. We also still have unmet, unmet need of changing the five-year bus routing system that before. Our teacher salary scale adjustment to compete in the marketplace. Even with the salary increases that we're talking about in this budget, we still will not be in the marketplace. We will not be competitive, and we will not match the salary scale principally of our school. This budget does not need, does not produce secondary class side, and it does not have full funding for the Dean School project, which is still in the CIP for 2026. You can see some of the other unmet needs, language arts and music teachers at Mayfield, musical instrument replacement, school safety officer at Mets, special education language pathologist and compliance specialist, historic justice facilitators, and structured flight facilitators. Also, this budget is not funded from its substitutes. It's not funded in its entirety of all technology requests that we receive or whole faculty. Let's wrap. So when we look at our budget, that category, the entire budget, all funds from all sources equate to $126,536,230. And we have been doing for the last several years, we have, based on a common practice throughout industry, we have set aside $3 million for the CIP, CIP fund. That CIP document will be shown to you later than tonight, but it was also approved in December of the past, at school board. You see debt service in the amount of $6,126,987. Included in this debt service account is our true debt service for what we own for in our building. Included in the other air force in the energy performance contract and for our topier slash printer contract that we have as well. So the operating fund now equals $117,492,43. Out of those funds, you can see that the food service fund on the next screen is $3.8 million. Primarily, the majority of that fund is coming from the federal government because of our high free reduced diet school lunch population. Other local, the $756,500 is another money that we get for Dean students coming through the line buying their breakfast or lunch in our school. The state did give more money this year, $140,869. The increase for that amount came from the desire by the governor for all, all reduced meal kids to not, to effectively become free breakfast and lunch. With all the additional funding so that our reduced meal kids would eat free in our school. And we also see we have a little over $4 billion in federal grant funds that supports Title I, Title II, all the Title VI. So our, our regular operating fund that we've been discussing, as you all are very familiar with, is $109,589,574. And that's the fund for all the daily operations of the, of the school district. Up this amount of the operating fund, approximately 80% of these funds are dedicated and budgeted at the school, the school-based cost. All of these other information, technology, student achievement, transportation, all certainly go into supporting the efforts of the school. Approximately 80% of all funds are directly budgeted to the school. Only this slide shows approximately 84.5% of all of our budget is the personnel and benefit cost. You can see around the horn where you have about 7.4% in purchase services, about 5% in materials and supply, and smaller amounts. And, and you see the contingency preserve has been increased from $350,000, which we've had in the past, to $450,000. And we discussed that earlier in this presentation, and we've added $100,000 in this account due to uncertainties that we may have in receiving sales tax from, as a part of our revenue stream. Fund statement. So in the final slide, we're showing our meeting. Once the meeting on April 1st has been canceled with city council, been canceled indefinitely, we're not, not sure when or if that meeting will be rescheduled. All right. Are there any questions, concerns, comments that anyone would like to make about this budget?
I do, Mr. Chair, when you get a chance. So I, I'll note that I have not been recognized by the chair. I'm gonna assume Sanford might still be having audio problems. This is Mr. Albrecht. And I'm gonna go back to Slide Three, the additional $800 and some thousand dollars of state funding. And I want to start just with a real curious question for insight. What's the difference between a counselor and a psychologist since they're roughly the same cost?
Dr. Saunders, are you, what, what, maybe you can, Dr. So?
Yes, that, uh, school psycho, uh, school counselor is a licensed instructional person. They work with the K-12 Counseling Program, and the school psychologist is a different licensure.
So.
They work with students as well.
So I, this is very difficult, right? Because we all know mental health is a big issue. But I also, and Andy, you, you started off with that with keeping a part of this in contingency. I think there's gonna be a sad reality come the fall that Virginia is gonna have the dire straits with respect to collecting revenue. Some people are saying the economy could revert as far back as the 2008 level. Just sales taxes, because no one's buying anything right now, apparently except toilet paper. Unemployment claims are rising, and who knows what's gonna happen with respect to the ability to collect income tax? So I'm, I guess I am cautious with respect to spending 80 or 90% of the money. I look at the, the above the lines, the mandatory things, and say, yeah, we have to do that. And I think we've made a commitment to the teachers with respect to planning periods. And, and Board Docs is almost a, you gotta do it because that's how we do all of our meetings. Below that, I, I personally have some, I don't question the need. I just wonder, is that the right message with where we potentially are going financially?
So we don't know the full extent. You're right. We don't know the full extent of what's gonna happen. And we know the president and, actually, the president, the, the president and the progress passed a relief package or a $2 trillion package, I think it was yesterday. Part of that was additional funding going to public education into the state. We don't have any information at this time for if any of that money would be, how it would be distributed or how it would flow, if any, to Manassas City. You're right. We don't know that much, but it's one of the things. And Albrecht, and we don't know what effects this will have on our funding and our budget, not only FY 21, what we're talking about today, but also against the May and the June CIP act. And again, uh, what we're going through at this time.
Mr. Albrecht, this is Dr. Navin. We had a conference call this morning with the state superintendent and the question of budget came up. And his advice to us was to use the current count tool, which is where we got these numbers to base our budgets. And also talk to Mr. Hawkins today. And if we get news that is not pleasant for us when it comes to budget, you know, we will have to go back and look at those items, especially the ones below the 582-801 line.
Hey. Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's my biggest fear is that here we are, we've already had quite a few positions in this budget, and then this, and we really, I hate to see us with the false expectation of exerting effort to hire people starting one July only to find out that they can't. Or worse, they start and we tell them that's, thank you very much. All before school starts. I'm gonna chime in here, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, if you can hear me.
I can hear you. Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. And the same worries that Mr. Albrecht has, the, uh, the teacher coverage, I'm not too worried about that because that would have to be paid to subs if we had them anyway. And if unemployment goes the way folks are discussing right now, we're gonna have an overabundance of substitutes, and this money probably won't be spent. If, if worse comes to worst. Board Docs, obviously, we, I, I, I agree with that. The two counselors, the plumber and the psychologist, with Mr. Albrecht on that, that those are, seem to be very necessary positions. But we're, they're, they're more than positions. If, if, if everything goes to, goes to pot as they say it may, now we've got one, two, three, four individuals that we've hired. So it's more than just buying a bus that we can send back. I'm concerned about that. And, but I also, it's $350,000, which is a lot of money in the total scheme of things. If we have a problem, it's not gonna be $50,000. It's gonna be 3.5 million. I, it worries me spending that money, but it also worries me not. And everybody.
There he is, right here.
We need to mute everybody that's not speaking. Part of contingency, I think that's a grand idea, mainly because, again, the same reason we're talking about having problems with everything else. And I do have another question on the debt service that we have in this budget. That is actual debt service. Is that correct, Andy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's my two cents on the remaining funds to expend of unmet needs.
All right, thank you. Are they have a comment?
Yeah, I had a question or a thought. My concern is mental health status of our students when they do come back. Because this is a traumatic experience for them, and we don't know how much more traumatic it's going to be or what's going to happen between now and when school comes back. And how badly are we going to need those counselors to support our students and to support our staff? Because counselors and school psychologists, they don't just work with the students. They work with the families, and they also work with staff. And if we look at the trajectory that this is supposed to be going, the, the thought is that it's going to get much worse. And I'm concerned that we wouldn't have enough mental health professionals to take care of our students and provide trauma-informed instruction and support. That's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no further comments, I'm gonna ask the motion in a second. But before we do, I'll, I'll just say that without, you know, wobbling, I agree with everything that was said by, by three board members preceding me. However, my overarching feeling is probably more aligned with Ms. Stevens in the sense that we're already seeing, you know, a lot of folks who have issues and are struggling. There's been an increase in domestic violence nationwide, and this is just the beginning of this. And that's just one manifestation of some of the things going on. So though we could have issues, I feel more comfortable having counselors and the psychologists there as an assistance and a backdrop to the inevitable issues we're gonna face as a school system and a community going forward. That is my two cents. But I take all the comments that were said. I think they're all made valid points. With that, I believe we have four different motions about the budget and CIP, but this one is about the budget. So if I can get a motion for the budget, which is, I believe, on page two.
I've got it in front of me here, sir. I move that, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approved the FY 2020, 2021 budget as presented in the amount of $126,876,230. And authorize the school board chairman to transmit these estimated to the city council of Manassas in accordance with school board Virginia State Code.
Second by Seberg.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mrs. Maria, a second by, uh, Mrs. Seberg, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget as presented in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and authorized the school board chairman to transmit this estimate to the city council of Manassas in accordance with school board policy, Virginia State Code. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
My, I, I, I still have the reservations that I did have that I just expressed a few minutes ago. And Mrs. Stevens, thank you very much for your comments. Um, and I agree with you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion on the table. Ms. Garza, may you, a roll call, please, Ms. Garza.
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. De Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
As Mr. De Maria said, in the interest of brevity through the COVID virus, making sure we do it in quick action, aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams? Mrs. Williams?
I'm sorry, I forgot I put myself on mute. Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And thank you for your work on this. The ayes have it seven zero. Mr. Hawkins, back to you.
Okay, on your, on your screen and, uh, is the health insurance plan that we talked about during our last budget session. Nothing has changed from our last budget session to this point. We are, employees, employee only contribution for health insurance will go down seventeen dollars. And I think for employee plus one, it's, uh, I think it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars that'll go down and for family will go down, uh, I think it's thirty-seven, thirty-eight dollars. So it's like ten dollars each for going down for each, for every employee. So for the second year in a row, our employees' health insurance will be going, uh, down or their contribution to the health insurance will be going down. So, um, I don't, there, nothing's changed from the last time that we met with, with, uh, with the health insurance. And the next item would be, next item would be, uh, placement scales. We had a discussion last, uh, at the work session about where we would place teachers on the scale when they, um, when they came to us from another school division. We believe that this, uh, document represents the consensus for the board at that time and that we would, that the main overriding factor is that our, that an employee coming from the outside of Manassas City from another school division would not be placed on a higher scale, a step on the scale than one of, than any of our employees who had continuous service with Manassas City, uh, throughout their career. So if, if a, uh, twenty-eight-year, uh, employee from Manassas City is on step twenty-seven or twenty-eight or twenty-six, we will not bring another employee from the outside with people of greater experience at a higher step than what our current employees are at this time. We, we don't want to devalue the service of our, of our, of our employees or long-term employees. And it's just the right thing to do, the common sense thing to do. So we believe that this scale accurately reflects, uh, that. But at the end of the day, all of these will be done on a employee-by-employee basis. We want to make sure that we don't have any employee that come from another school division or from an outside of Manassas City Public School that will be making, will be placed on a, on a higher fixed scale than our long-term employees who've been with us throughout their career.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. So we have two separate motions for these two separate presentations. Let's start with the investment plan and premium. Do you have a motion for that presentation, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the proposed FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one insurance plans and premiums presented.
Second by Seberg.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. De Maria, second by Mrs. Seberg, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the proposed FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one insurance plans and premium as presented. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to close that I receive healthcare benefits from the city of Manassas public schools that in no way renders my inability, my ability to render a partial, uh, vote.
Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll say the same thing he did. Ditto.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion on the table from Mr. De Maria, I took mine, Mrs. Seberg, uh, Ms. Garza, may you do a roll call, vote, please?
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer?
Aye.
Mr. De Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, may I have a motion, please, for the FY twenty twenty-one salary schedule?
Sir, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one salary schedules and compensation as presented.
Yes, you, Mr. Seberg?
I think that was Robin.
Oh, I saw, I was watching, uh, Suzanne's picture, so, um, all right. Motion by Mr. Maria, by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one salary schedules and compensation as presented. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, sir. First, I wanted to salute employees employed by the, by the city of Manassas and as, that does not impact my ability to render impartial decision. Somebody needs to mute a mic out there.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, second.
There we go.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Uh, my second question really is a thank you to staff for the presentation. Am I correct in looking at it that this documents the three times in the past thirty years, we have not provided a step increase?
I, um, I'm looking at the chart now. I know, I know it's at least two times going here. I'm not sure about three. Let's see.
Mr. Albrecht, I can answer that. We had, when we looked at it, we had several of our staff that was at the thirty-year mark. And all of them were on step twenty-eight, so that's where we got the two from. Uh, if you look at year sixteen, year seventeen, you'll see where that is flat. Um, and that's because that, when we looked at it, that's where we had the other instance where, um, the person was not at the right step. That's how we made those changes.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion?
Mr., uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Also, my wife is employed by the, uh, city of Manassas Public Schools, as is my daughter, who does not live with us. Um, and I would, again, uh, reiterate, reiterate what Mr. Albrecht said. I appreciate all of the work that went into, was rather adamant about it and, uh, it looks exactly as I had hoped that it would look and I think it looks very good on us that we are so close to our, and experience being on the same line. Kudos to, uh, boards before us that were adamant about making sure that we, we stepped it and to this board and the more current boards that fixed it a little bit in the, in the recent past as well. So, uh, thank you all very much and, and, uh, I really like the way this looks.
Great point, Mr. De Maria. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll reiterate the motion just so we know where we're at. A motion by Mr. De Maria, second by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the FY twenty twenty-one salary schedule and compensation as presented. May I have a roll call, vote, please, Mrs. Garza?
Yes. Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer? Mr. De Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the ayes have it seven zero. I believe the next item is, you again, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Yes, go for it.
The next item is that discussion.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion, right?
Dr. Neiman?
The, the CIP, the twenty, the CIP and five-year forecast? Did we skip that?
I think it was all included in the motion for the, uh, the first one.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda. Thank you very much.
I, I don't think it was. Uh, yeah, I agree with this. Could the clerk please verify that?
Yes. I was thinking that we did not do a motion for the CIP.
The CIP, the CFP was adopted or due since it was set. I'm not sure that it needs to be adopted yet. We can review the five-year forecast if we might.
I personally don't review the five-year forecast.
No, we don't. Um, I, I just want to get a clarification because it's on the agenda. Have we already, um, approved it? I don't recall approving it, but I don't remember everything. If we have not, we still need to approve it and want to transmit the letter to, to the mayor. So we should, um, probably briefly touch on that.
Mr. Williams, can you please repeat that?
Oh, yes. I don't, I don't believe, on the agenda, it says that we have to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-five CIP and five-year forecast. And unless we did that the previous meeting, we need to do that now.
CIP, it was, the CFP was already been approved in December.
We can look it up again if we can, if you have the CIP. Hold on, we'll have to look at the CIP. We'll make the motion again.
I think the subtle point is we agree, we approved the CIP in December. What about the five-year revenue forecast?
The five-year revenue forecast, the five-year revenue forecast is shown on the screen now. We have adopted, we are showing in FY twenty-one, uh, the revenue estimate that we have received from the state. It was adopted by the General Assembly. FY twenty-one city revenue is based on what we were, the guidance that we have received from the city manager, I guess from city council, on what their contribution will be for FY twenty-one. Going out in the future years and FY twenty, twenty-one beyond, the state revenue is going up at approximately two percent. We, oh, we do know what the General Assembly adopted budget is for FY twenty-two, but we chose to leave it at two percent simply because of the uncertainties that are happening now in, in the economy and with the coronavirus epidemic. As far as the city is concerned, in the out years, that's going up at a one point eight percent. And what, all we know with the city is what we have been adopted at this point in time. So we are assuming going forward, uh, in twenty-two through twenty-five for the purposes of this document, that it'll be going up one point eight percent during that period of time. As far as the expenses are, are concerned, the expenditures are, what's been adopted for FY twenty-one and, um, they will, they're going up at a rate of approximately three point two five percent annually out through twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. We are at three point two five. If you remember, that, the reason why we have selected three point two five is back a year or more ago when we were doing with city council about, uh, a funding formula, uh, agreement on a funding formula, we went back and looked at historically, how much did our expenses go up in Manassas City? And we have been, um, telling the former city council throughout the last year and a half that our funding needs to be greater than one point eight percent and it should, at least needs to match the historical cost of the increase in construction of a three point two five percent. So we have left three point two five percent in it going from FY twenty-two forward. Of course, by the time we get to FY twenty-two and beyond, our revenue and expenditures must, um, must match. So, uh, we will make adjustments as we need to. Understate law will require to have a balanced budget and so we will, we will accomplish that in those future years. If you go down, uh, the five-year forecast, you'll see on the first line in the second section where it says, uh, proper revenue, we reduced it down to zero for FY twenty-one. That's based on advice that we have received, with guidance that we have received from city personnel that, um, we will not be, that, that all the major projects have been completed and that we will not be receiving proper funds in FY twenty-one. I don't agree that it should be zero because they are still building out near the airport, uh, today and, uh, all of those units have not been sold. But I don't know what the proper amount will be at the end of FY twenty-one. Being on the conservative side, we have taken the city guidance and left it at zero. But I do expect there will be funds, um, in that, um, will actually be collected in FY twenty-one in proper funds. I just don't have any basis to, uh, make a determination of what that amount should be at this time. We, we have reduced it down to, uh, to zero. You'll also see the debt service and the CFP fund out there. And through Mr. De Maria's earlier point, that is our true debt service, um, for FY twenty-one. You'll, you can see how much money we have set aside for the energy performance contracts and the capital leases for our top years in front of the management division. So at the end of FY twenty-one, you can see that as we are sitting here today, based on forecast that we have, our ballot, our budget is balanced, the only money being used at a fund balance would be from the food service fund. Um, and that's simply because they are, their fund balance exceeds the DOE's and the Department of Ed's recognition for, uh, fund balance. And we are using some of that fund balance to help, uh, ballot their budget for FY twenty-one. But we, as you can see, we are in fairly good shape. We are in good shape for FY twenty-one and in future years where we start, um, falling into the red is within FY twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six. You'll also notice that in FY twenty-six, we have seventy-six million dollars sitting out there for, uh, replacement of Dean Elementary School. Which at the time, I'm not, I'm assuming that the cost of this building is even greater now than what it was when these estimates were given to it. At that time, we had no idea, you know, what the tariffs were going, that were going to be implemented by the federal government. And we, um, certainly, all of those estimates are, I think we are very questionable at this time based on the state of our economy, uh, now in North Pole. But that's the best number that we have at this time to. But that's the best number that we have at this time to place out there. We'll be going through another process this year. We just signed a contract with a firm to help us go through and reassess our needs going forward, determining what the condition of our buildings are, listening, looking at our enrollment projections going forward, and also offering different options to the school board again about when we should replace Dean and what other alternatives may be out there for the structure of the school division. That, that project will be ongoing probably in the next six months. Those, that information, if you were on the board or if you remember, Citygate was the vendor who did that for us a couple of years ago. We're going to go through that process again with a company called T G P. And they will help us to look at our options and help us plan for the future, at least through 2035. So, for you is the five-year forecast and review the CIP in the past. CIP has, it's not changed. We're, this summer, we have two huge projects going. We're going to be replacing the H B A C system at Well, and we will be replacing the roof at Mayfield. We'll also be having looking into getting some archi, architectural and engineering done on the proposed new headquarters for the central office. Which I think is, will be the current police station in Manassas. We've also got additional funding in there for our technology upgrades, our bus replacements to keep it on a a 16-year replacement cycle. And we have additional funding in there for trailers if needed for enrollment from over. We combined the H B A C system replacement. We postponed that. It was supposed to happen in FY 20, which would have been last summer. But we had such a short summer breaks due to the changing our calendar that we had to postpone it this year. With the closure of our schools from now to, or remainder of the school year, we will be allowed now, we're trying to get our vendors in to begin their processes as soon as possible. We were always very concerned about whether the H B A C system could be put in and be fully operational before the before teachers returned in the first of August. The new teachers, I think, were coming in at the end of July. Now with this additional time, we believe that we'll be fine and we'll be able to get the H B A C system around, cut and running, working perfectly before the start of the new school year. So it's one hidden benefit to all of us. And maybe the roof R F P has not gone out yet. It should be pulling out within the next 10 days. To receive bids back from vendors, potential vendors for the replacement of that roof. Starting in July, August, we'll be going, we'll send out another R F P to be able to hire architecture and engineering firms to help us with the renovation of the current police station. About that same time is when the city will be breaking ground on Grand Avenue for the new public safety building in that area. They claim the last opportunity was going to take 16 to 18 months to finish their building and for them to transition over to the new public safety building. As soon as that is complete, then we will begin, based on decisions made by the school board and based on recommendations from the architecture and engineering firm, we'll begin renovation to the current police station. Let's retrofit that building to meet the school board meeting. This CIP, of course, changes every year. You can see where we have planning in the, in the out years. But it will, but right now, the school board has done what it always traditionally does, and it's one year at a time. So we will be, we will be sending a tenth of the school board approved FY 21 CIP. Any questions about the five-year forecast and CIP?
All right. Thank you, sir.
We want a motion for the entire thing then, for both the CIP and for the five-year forecast?
Yes, please.
I moved it to the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the fiscal FY 2021-25 five-year forecast as presented and authorized the school board chairman to transmit the 2021-2025 CIP and five-year forecast to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, Virginia State Code, and joint budget agreement.
Second.
By Mr. Di Maria, seconded by Mrs. Williams. The School Board of City Manassas. Was that you, Mrs. Williams? Hold it. Seberg? My, my eyes were down. Okay, let's try that again. Motion by Mr. Di Maria, seconded by Mrs. Seberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the FY 2021-2025 five-year forecast as presented and authorized the school board chairman to transmit the 2021-2025 CIP and five-year forecast to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, Virginia State Code, and joint budget agreement. Is there any discussion, Mr. Di Maria?
Thank you, sir. First thing, on the motion that I just made and as I was reading it, I don't know that we have a joint budget agreement, and I don't know if that should not be stricken from the, the motion. I, I would I would like to amend my motion and remove that because I don't think we have a current joint budget agreement.
You're correct. So are you amenable to that, Ms. Seberg?
Yes, I will support that finally amendment.
We'll amend that motion to take off the joint budget agreement part. Thank you, sir. Great catch.
Thank you. And Andy, I've got a question about the police station. Did you say that we would be expending that $500,000 in this July?
We will begin the process of sending out the money that is available until July 1st of 2020 for FY 21. So we will be sending out an R F P in July. And then we will be getting back, we'll have to select an architecture and engineering firm. And once that is completed, then they will begin their work. And we'll come back with recommendations from the board to give them to it for the layout of the new, the new central office.
Thank you. I don't want to amend the motion or amend the CIP, but I do have a problem of spending a dollar on a building that has not been dedicated or we have not received communication that we are going to be able to do anything with that building. You know, talk is cheap. That's all we've heard so far. I, I hope that would be the case, is that we'd be able to use that building and at no cost. But if not, I don't want to be spending money on a building that is not ours or is not available for our use. So I would like, not as a motion, but I would just like to agreement that we don't spend any money on a building that is not ours.
I would agree with you, Mr. Di Maria. I think Dr. Newman and we did discussions with the city manager, Mr. Tate, to come back with some agreement or proposed agreement for the school board to approve. But we're not, certainly not going to spend money on a piece of property that we have no right to, no legal right.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me start with, I could not agree more with Mr. Di Maria. And I realize that we're in an emergency status right, situation right now. But I'd like to see us do something with the city to say, if we don't have resolution of title and what we're going forward doing in in more than just conceptually, in a real document, in a real artifact, by some date, and it may be as soon as the first of July, that we begin to explore other options. Because we at some point have to do something. Relative to the discussion we've just had, though, I totally get why we took out the proffer fees and let's hope that's an indication from the city that future development will be commercial and will not have any school impact. Andy, you mentioned starting the air conditioning early. But it's in next year's budget, which is, or the budget we're getting ready to approve, which would be available July 1st.
Air conditioning is in this year's budget. It's in FY 20. The roof at Mayfield is in FY 21, right?
That's right. That's enough. You're right. You're right. So my question was going to be, should that be accelerated to take advantage of what we have right now? Our construction is a vital industry that's allowed to continue to operate. And we've got a period where we're going to have no students using the buildings.
Yes, sir. We have already, have gone up for our F P, and I think the school board has already awarded the contract for the H B A system replacement. I have spoken to our maintenance director, Mr. Hilton, and they're in contact with the vendors. And we want them to start as soon as possible on these summer projects that we have at school. We might as well use this time to be productive and to upgrade our facility. Just to give you some context, we've also have some carpeting that is being, that will be starting to be replaced at Osborne, and that's next week. So we are, we are accelerating our, our summer project as soon as possible.
No, I apologize, and I probably wasn't clear. I was really getting at the air conditioning, pardon me, the roofing project. Which is in the budget starting July 1st, and yet we're going to start needing the buildings mid-August. Is there a way to accelerate those projects? Or have you looked at that? And I realize now you're talking about transcending budget boundaries that would require supplemental appro, appropriations or some weird stuff. And is that just beyond the art of the possible?
No, it's not. We have, we have enough money in contingency reserve to, if the vendor needs to be, let's just assume the vendor starts on May the 1st, right? And for whatever date, before then, we have enough money in contingency reserve to be able to fix that until such time as July 1st comes back, and then we can transfer the money back to replenish the contingency reserve. So we, we have enough flexibility right now to be able to get our vendors up and going right away. But the Mayfield roof project has not actually been bid yet. It's out, it will be out on the street within the next five to 10 days. We should be able to get a response back if it's by the second board meeting in April is when we hope to get it. So realistically, the roof project at Mayfield could start as early as May the 1st. So we will, we will transfer the money back and forth as needed to be able to get this project completed or where to be, to begin as early as possible.
That got to my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Actually, can I make one more point, Mr. Chair?
Go for it.
I just like to observe on the five-year revenue forecast, we just, to the discussion Mr. Di Maria, Mrs. Stevens, and I had, if you take out the positions that we had angst over because of the potential revenue issues that could be looming, we actually would not be using fund balance in the budget.
Great point.
So we're deficit spending because we can.
Right.
And I think that's really the heart of my angst.
Okay, I get it. And so just another point, I don't know if Ms. Miller, Mr. Hawkins, or Dr. Newman can correct me, but I believe we're waiting here back from the city specifically about what they're going to do with the building and promising us our use. Have they responded back with affirmatively yet?
Chairman, I know we, we sent your letter there, but I have not received any response to your letter to them.
Okay, so we, I know they're busy with other things. We could follow up with them, maybe, just to see, you know, where they stand. That would be awesome. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I will repeat the motion so we know where at. A motion by Mr. Di Maria, seconded by Mrs. Seberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the FY 2021-2025 five-year forecast as presented and authorized the school board chairman to transmit the 2021-2025 CIP and five-year forecast to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, Virginia State Code, and as was amended, taking out the joint budget agreement language, taking that out. So Ms. Garza, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Williams, I believe that person who said that was Mrs. Williams.
You know what? You are right. I cannot be my own writing. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman Williams?
Yes, aye.
Vice Chair, woman keeper.
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria?
Yes, and aye.
Mr. Alfred?
Aye.
Mrs. Seber?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
The ayes and the yeses have it seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins, for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. Next on the agenda, new business, COVID-19 update on M C P S. I believe Dr. Newman?
Yes, sir. At the first March meeting, I believe Dr. Saunders presented to the board our plan to, to address coronavirus and this impact on our schools. On March 23rd, the governor made the decision to close schools. On the 24th of March, I sent a letter to staff, students, and parents concerning graduation, grading, S O Ls, which were being waived. We're in the process of waiving our state superintendent device pickup and instruction going forward. I'd also discuss medication pickup and student belongings. When it comes to graduation, I know that is a high topic right now, especially for our seniors, because they work so hard to earn the opportunity to walk across the stage. We're in the early discussions on, on trying to schedule a graduation. As I stated earlier, we had a conference call this morning. It was discussed that we probably should not make any plans to have anything in June. That any plans that we have should start in July. So that would be the earliest opportunity that we would have to have a graduation. And I believe the most likely venue for us would be to utilize Osborne High School's football field. Because I think it would be too late to get into George Mason at this time. But I do want all our parents to know, and the board and our students to know, that we're going to do everything in our power to ensure that they have a graduation of some, some sort. Hopefully, we can have a full-fledged graduation out on Osborne's football field sometime in July, latest the early part of August before our students take off to college and do their military duties. Dr. Saunders will give us a brief update on the instruction portion of our plan in, in a minute, and then she will be followed by Mr. Hawkins, who will talk about our meals and our plans when it comes to operation concerns. I want to take this time to just commend everyone in the Manassas City Public School family for how we've come together. And, you know, I joke about the number of Zoom meetings we've had. But it's been two or three every day. And, and just knowing that our, our teachers are at home planning and they're already interacting with our students. Receiving emails from parents, just thanking our, our staff for how they've handled everything. our, our staff for, for how they've handled everything. I know Mr. Hawkins is going to talk about the meals, but you know, guidance from, from the DOE, Ms. Jackson changed our delivery method to a five-day meal preparation that will, that happens on Monday instead of a daily. And, you know, it was overwhelming how many people showed up on Monday. And we since then have, have sat back and made plans and we, we made some adjustments and hopefully everything will go smooth on Monday, but I, I'll let Mr. Hawkins get deeper into that. We're going to continue to keep our, our staff and our students and our families up to date as we receive information from the, the DOE. We have scheduled Tuesday and Thursday telephone conferences at 8:30 until we can get to the, the closure of school. And it's been very valuable information shared through those conference calls. And again, we will get information out to our MCPS family, which includes our parents as we receive it. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Saunders, who will then turn it over to Mr. Hawkins. And then we'll answer any questions from the board.
So thank you, Dr. Newman. I hope everyone can hear me. As Dr. Newman stated, we are, I spoke to you last time and, and shared with you our plan. As we were in the midst of our planning to prepare, educate and then respond. And we are fully in the response phase right now. And tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about two areas, continuity of learning and continuity of student support, which are two of the things that are very important to our students and our staff. I would agree with Dr. Newman. It's been a challenge for us to move to a virtual experience, but it's been a great opportunity to continue to see how much collaboration can happen with our great people in the city of Manassas. So first I'll start with the continuity of learning. And really our goal is to ensure that our students are well-prepared for the next school year. And so a couple of things that will be coming, as Dr. Newman kind of spoke to. We will be implementing our distance learning plan that I spoke to a little bit about in the previous meeting. That plan really has three pieces. We have a device distribution piece. We have a virtual professional development piece. And we have the lesson delivery beginning. Our device distribution will begin on April 6th. And it's going to take us a bit of time to distribute the devices to those families that have indicated to us through the survey that they are in need of, of a, a need of a device. And that will happen at the building level. Principals will be getting in contact with families and making the arrangements for that in the near future. Our virtual professional development opportunities for our teachers to make sure that they have all the tools that they need will begin April 6th and run through the 17th. And then our official lesson delivery begins April 20th for students. Talk just briefly about what we are thinking about with our lesson expectations. We are asking teachers to prepare one 30-minute lesson and assignment per week per class in grades five through 12. We do have our learning management system, Schoology, that our teachers will be able to access very easily. And many of our students and teachers are already in there. We really spent a lot of time talking about how much do we ask our students to do? And if you sort of take a 30-minute lesson per week per class, if you think about a, a high school student, that's eight classes that they could potentially be taking, maybe nine. And understanding that all of those things will take time. So we're very aware of a specific amount of time for a lesson. In grades one through four, we're going to have our iReady lessons. Our teachers can prepare those and personalize, personalize, personalize those for their students in both reading and math. And then across the board in pre-K through 12, our teachers are providing enrichment activity, videos, links, all kinds of ways that they can interact with their students and engage with their students, a really creative kinds of methods. Our teachers are already doing that. And we just look for that to continue to grow and to get vibrant over the next couple of weeks. We will be asking staff to have class help hours or check-in times for their students. And the work that the students are doing will be formative. They will be getting some feedback on assignments. It is not a time for new grades, but it is a time for our staff to provide feedback that will help our students to grow and be prepared for the year to come. As we look into 2020 and 2021, it's important to know that our staff is working on adding a, a zero unit, sort of a, a pre-unit to our regular unit areas. And that is designed to review and reteach any missing content from this closure time. That means we'll have to adjust our pacing in 2020 and 2021, but our staff is working very hard on doing that right now. I'm going to move on to the continuity of student support. So while instruction is one of the things that we want to make sure is continuing throughout our closure, we also want to make sure that our students are supported in the ways that they typically are, even when they're in our buildings. So we have a lot of resources that are available to our families and our students. On the Manassas City Public Schools webpage, there's a COVID-19 tab. And if you click on that tab, there's lots of information, both from Dr. Newman, from our school staff that has put that on there. And there's even a set of videos, the student, under the student support tag, there are some videos that parents can use to help to talk with their children appropriately about the virus and how it is affecting them. So there's some, some great resources there. Our Manassas City Public Schools Community Resource Guide is available to all Manassas City residents through the webpage as well. Our counselors have copies of those. Our school counselors will also be participating in lessons, developing 30, 1 30-minute lesson per level. And those lessons can really be designed around things that students might be dealing with at their particular levels. We hear a lot from our students, our kids now that they miss their friends, that they miss the engagement. And so ways that they can continue to engage is a great way for our counselors to, to talk with them. Our counselors will also have virtual office hours where they will connect back and forth. And they will continue to have referrals to outside services. Our school counselors will also be having weekly school counseling meetings to collaborate with one another, with our social worker, with our additional resources to ensure that our continued services are happening and that our students are well taken care of. So at that, I can either take questions or turn it over to Andy.
Any questions? Hearing none, Mr. Hawkins. Thank you, Dr. Saunders.
Okay, I know that some of you may have heard some concerns regarding the distribution of meals to our pre-produced large population just for the last couple of weeks. So let's just want to give you a little recap. Not last week, but the week before, we, we served approximately 5,400 meals. Last Monday, we served 11,130. Approximately, it was almost 50% increase in, in demand during that period of time. So we were, this past Monday, we were overwhelmed by the number of requests or people who showed up for, for food. And it showed, we had backups at, on Weems, Osborne and Round. Going forward for this coming Monday, we are going to continue to be serving at those three sites. We'll be continuing to serve five days worth at one time. But we will also be bringing our staff in earlier. To have all of the meals fully prepared and bagged up and ready to go. At, at each site, also we will be changing the way that the meals are, are served to our, to our population. For example, at Osborne, we will have two lines. We have one on the parking lot side and one on the bus loop side. So that we can serve more people and go through quickly. At Round, we will be serving the meals both in the parking lot and on the bus loop. And as well over in the big parking lot on where I don't know if y'all know, where the basketball courts and everything are, where the tennis courts are at, at Round, we'll be serving folks. And we can try to keep as many people off of these things road as possible. So we will have the meals fully prepared, fully backed, bagged up, and so that people will be able to grab and go. At Weems, we will have this, the parents and students who walk to the school to pick up their, their meals will be served at the front door of, of Weems. And the people who drive will come up through the kitchen ride area. And again, the meals will be fully prepared, fully bagged up in advance. And so we hope to be able to transition those people through very quickly. Also, we will have SROs at Weems. And those people who walk, well, they'll be at all schools, but, but at Weems in particular, last week, we had issues with people congregating too close together. So we will have, we will have instructions for the SRO and with our volunteers to help, if we do have any backup with people walking to the site, for them to help spread them out and, and keep them out of safe distance from each other. We believe that we've got a good system. We've got a good plan for Monday. I want to remind the board and the community that this is new to us. This is something that we've never done before. And so we're making adjustments as we go. We think that we have made enough adjustments to make Monday go by to go much smoother than it did this prior one. Rest assured, if we, we will still continue to revise the distribution method based on what happens on Monday. We will, we do not want, we want to get the food out to our community as best as we can as possible. But this little stress through our, our highways, roadways, through our police force. But we won't, we're, so we're preparing more deals. We have a plan of distribution that we think will make it faster. And, but if we come back this coming Monday and we're, we pull up another 49 or 50% in demand, we will have to come back again the following weekend and adjust our delivery method and our plans to be able to accommodate the needs of our community. We've already talked about the summer projects that I was going to talk about at this time. So just to reiterate, we are moving up as many of our summer projects and moving as many vendors as we possibly can to be able to work on at a school and complete those projects as soon as possible. All of our, our maintenance staff at Weems at the school and have shut down boilers and other HBA studio equipment. While they're not, so they won't be, the inside of our schools are not at, at the same temperature as they have been what they would normally be. These, these were done primarily to save utility costs throughout the community. I think that's it. The board have any questions, concerns coming?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I appreciate it. Before we ask for other questions, I know Mrs. Seberg had a question for Dr. Newman. Mrs. Seberg?
How's that?
Okay, we can hear you now. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Both my questions, I believe, are for Dr. Newman. And the first one is about graduation 2020. And we're hearing lots of ideas out in the community, what people want for their kids and what community members would like to be able to do. But do we have a way of gathering that? Is that something that, can we put a category on Let's Talk where if somebody has an idea or something they want to contribute? Connection that way? Or is there a contact person that they should talk to?
They can send any of their recommendations to me through Let's Talk. There's already a superintendent tab for that.
Okay, super. Okay. And then my the survey that we've sent out, it's been out for a few weeks now, I believe, about the internet connectivity for our students. Do we have, do we have most of those answers back? Or are we still trying to get that?
We've, we, we have closed the survey itself, so we, and that's the information that the principals will be using to contact those individuals that are in need of a device.
Okay.
So we have received some requests through either email or Let's Talk from parents who say that they did not have the opportunity to complete the survey. And we've added those students to a list and those students will also be called during the week of April 6th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Seberg. Any other questions for Dr. Newman, Dr. Saunders or Mr. Hawkins? Going once, going twice? Well, in that case, thank you very much for the presentation. The meeting fortunately afforded the chance to talk about issues. And going forward, until the emergency is lifted, I believe we can only meet to talk about specifically COVID-19 updates or any other thing that may be urgent. So who knows when we'll get together again, but thank you for this update. And at some point, if this continues to go on, which seems like it obviously will, we may be able to get together and talk more about what we're doing. And if you have any questions in the interim or concerns, please reach out to Dr. Newman or to me so we can make sure that everyone's ideas and thoughts are conveyed and communicated. You all have been awesome to work with my fellow members going through this, this stuff we've been going through. Very challenging. And I appreciate your diligence and even your being here tonight. I asked Mrs. Garza to alter the agenda and put board member comments for last, because who knows when we'll talk again. So we'll start off with Mrs. Stevens.
Sorry. I really want to commend the school staff, central office, on all the work they've been doing to take care of our students, to take care of our faculty and to get out all those meals to kids, because I know we have a high level of need in the community. So I just want to thank everyone for the really hard work they've been doing. There's so much that you all have done that we don't see that helps keep our schools up and running. And the plan that's been put together for our students and for our teachers is a really strong plan. And I'm really impressed by it and I appreciate it. And I want to thank everyone for their hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Mrs. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to thank the, my fellow school board members and also our staff for making this meeting possible tonight. Our daily lives have changed, but the people in our city have not. You continue to show us your loyalty through motivational messages and your grit through offering to help volunteer at various different needs. And I want to say thank you to our superintendent, Dr. Newman, and the administration teams for stepping up to the challenges and for showing leadership in new ways. And for communicating detailed information as it becomes available. To our teachers and staff that are demonstrating positivity through adversity, thank you for collaborating over what may be new technology to you and for sharing, the sharing of ideas. These strengths will carry us through and beyond. And educate, educationally, we will be more powerful on the other side. And to all our students, if you need something, please reach out to your parents, to your teachers and to your counselors. And if you're committed to learning, no one and nothing can ever stop you. So keep learning and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Seberg. Mrs. Williams?
Well, Mrs. Seberg said everything so perfectly well and have covered everything. I just would like to add one more thing. As, as teachers, students, parents, if they find they have any issues with this, with e-learning connectivity and they're struggling with, with getting any hotspots, whatever they need, I, I want to encourage everybody in the community to reach out to us because we can make sure whatever you need is provided somehow, some way. Because this is extremely important for everybody to get through this. Having the children who really do want to continue learning, to continue, to continue their academic success is, is by far very, very important. Safety first, but I believe that this doing, continuing their economic. Safety first, but I believe that this, doing, continuing their academic, academics is extremely important for their success. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Di Maria?
Thank you, sir. What the lady said already, and I, I don't know how many people are watching this anyway, so I'm not going to talk to the community. I'm going to talk to my, my fellow board members and, and staff that's here. The past 14-plus years, nearly 15 years, I've been doing this, and sometimes it's a real pain in the butt, and you got to go to meetings, and you got to go here, and you got to do that. I don't know if I've turned a leaf or what, but I miss you all very much. And I want this to be over so we can get back to meetings and agreeing and arguing and, and working for our children the way we should. So I just want everybody to know that I miss you, and I hope to give you a hug soon.
Very well put, Mr. Di Maria. Thank you very much. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Tim, there are 21 participations, participants at the present. But I really think I agree to my fellow board members, to those watching, we are living in interesting times with the new reality. Things that I don't think we'd ever have gone through. Watching the news and, you know, seeing reports of college seniors saying, wow, I didn't realize, you know, two weeks ago, when I packed up and pulled everything out of my dorm, that would be it, and that would be the end of my college experience. It's not the way I saw it ending. So I really get where our seniors are coming from with graduation. We certainly are living in challenging times, but it's not something that hasn't happened before. There are a lot of videos out there, if you haven't gone to look at them. Students that went through Hurricane Katrina, that went through the exact same thing, that all of a sudden saw their academic careers ending away they never thought was possible, that said, why me? That have gone on to be incredibly successful and learned a lot from it. So I do believe as a nation, we've got some more tough times to go through, but I am positive and confident we're going to come out ahead as long as we all continue to work together. And the staff who are making meals possible, continued learning possible, so students don't, you know, go back in what they've done. I appreciate everything everyone is doing. So until we meet again, thank you.
Very well put. Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Mrs. Kiefer?
Thank you, and I, I say this every meeting, it's always hard to follow everybody, because everything is stated so eloquently, and it's, it really reflects my thinking. I will say, though, that, you know, we're all dealing with this crisis, both personally in different ways, in our own jobs. And in, in my job right now, outside of the school board, where we serve seniors in a community, to have to think about different ways to meet the needs of older adults who are isolated, alone, can't have visitors, we've decided as an organization to use this crisis as an opportunity. And when I look at what the city of Manassas has done, from what the local businesses are doing, what our citizens are doing to ensure that we're only eating at our local restaurants, by takeout, of course, and how everybody around this table and beyond in this Manassas City community, from the superintendent to the cabinet, to the central office staff, admin, teachers, support staff, I mean, everybody's just stepping up in a way that you would never potentially see in quite the same light as we've seen during this crisis slash opportunity. So I just want to say heartfelt thanks to, to all of you. I think it's, in my job too, I'm dealing with a lot of parents who are waiting for school districts to make decisions in our surrounding communities, and they are surprised when I tell them what the city of Manassas is doing, because we were on this long before we essentially even need it to be. They are impressed by the plans you all have forth. When I ask them, don't you have this, don't you have that? I'm sharing resources you all are creating for our families and our students. It just makes me so proud to serve you all that are around the table, our teachers and everybody in the community making this happen during this moment. And I couldn't be more proud than this moment of the city of Manassas and this school district. I applaud you all, here to support you in any way I personally can, and I know this school board is too. So thank you all for everything, and let's just keep plugging away, because we've got this. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said, Mrs. Kiefer. I see Mr. Albrecht had something he was, had in the screen. I couldn't tell what it was.
I didn't know if anybody saw it, but this morning, we were supposed to have been at Osborne High School for the Special Olympic Challenge. We all had our ticket. One of many things that are, we'll figure out.
Exactly, exactly. Well, usually I try to be brief, but last night, after I finished my other job, around 11 o'clock, I was like, you know what? I need to say something, because I have something in my heart to say. So please bear with me. It's not 10 pages or anything, it is a couple pages though, so just please bear with me. Hope you all can hear me clearly enough. And as first broadcasted Prime Minister to the British people in 1940, Winston Churchill said it would be foolish to disguise the gravity of the hour. He said it would be still more foolish to lose heart or to lose courage. We are not in a literal world war, but we are fighting a worldwide battle against a practically invisible enemy, a virus. It is important that we not lose heart and that we not lose courage. And across this nation, we have not. I want to thank doctors, nurses, medical professionals, first responders, officers, and others who are on the front lines of this battle. Thanks to our sanitation workers, grocery store workers, and distributors, flight attendants and pilots, and countless others who are still working to help us. They are literally placing themselves in harm's way to help all of us. I also want to specifically thank those in our school system who have worked tirelessly to address the shutdown necessitated by this emergency. And I hope I don't leave somebody out, but it was late at night, so forgive me if I do. Dr. Newman, Dr. Saunders, Dr. Stone, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Barrett, Mrs. Garza, Mrs. Radford, Ms. Montoya, those of you on the call right now, and all of our central office staff, administrators, and our entire staff, you have worked hard to help our students and our community. Thanks to the numbers of bus drivers and staff who volunteered to help in any way they could to deliver food to students if that is legally allowable. A special thanks to our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, and food service staff who have gone above and beyond the call of duty. Thanks to the many community members, local government officials, and employees who have stepped up to help in any way they can, and I'm sure they will continue to do so. Thank you to my school board colleagues who are each concerned with and care about our students and our community, and I truly thank you for that. And thanks to our students and families. I know this situation is difficult, and I can't imagine how they feel, but thus far, they've handled it with resolve and grace. I know they will continue to do so. And to the class of 2020, hang in there. Now I'm going to go more globally. This is not a drill, and this is not easy. People are suffering mentally, physically, and emotionally. People are dying. I saw this afternoon that there was a Loudoun County school employee who died. Over 1,100 people are dead in the United States alone, and we're still counting. To get through this, we need to help each other, and we need to have faith. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said faith is taking the first step, even when you don't see the whole staircase. We can't see where this COVID staircase is taking us, but we can't help each other up the stairs. Please take care of yourselves, take care of your families, and take care of each other. Practice social distancing. If there is someone who is sick or set in, or is trying to work at home while educating their children, please see if you can help. Everybody can do their part. A good friend of mine in the community who had no idea what she used to do, she's retired, she loved to knit, she started making a mess for medical professionals, and that's her contribution, which is awesome. Dr. King also stated, "The ultimate measure of a man or woman is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." Where will you stand? An honor of woman's history, I'm going to end with a story that I read in an article which touched me, so I'll, I'll share with you all. And I'm almost done. On March 11th, Rebecca Mara, a 25-year-old runner in Oregon, was walking into a safety way after track practice, when she heard a woman call to her from a parked car. She went over to the car and found a woman and her husband, both in their 80s, who asked for her help. The 80-year-old woman cracked her window and explained, nearly in tears, that she was afraid to go in the store. The woman told her that Bend, Oregon, where they live, had just had its first case of coronavirus, and she'd heard that coronavirus disproportionately impacts older people. The couple had no family nearby that could help them shop, and they sat in their car for 45 minutes, waiting for the right person to ask. As soon as she agreed to buy the groceries, the woman slid a $100 bill and a list to Ms. Mara, and Ms. Mara went inside to do their shopping. She said she got hand soap and some other things that they needed. She bought most of the items, placed the bags in the couple's trunk, and gave them back their change. She said, "In a weird way, this is bringing us all together, because it's been so scary for everybody. I think emphasizing kindness and community and helping each other is really important. We will make it through this, but we need to be strong, work together, and be well." I apologize for the length of that, but I really felt like I should share it, and I hope to see you all again soon. I loved all your comments, and Godspeed. And with that, I will end my comments and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sir, I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Mr. Albrecht, that we adjourn. Ms. Garza, may I have your roll call, please?
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chair, will they call for?
Aye.
Mrs. Di Maria? Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mrs. Seaberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
All right, I think we have seven ayes. The motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, I truly appreciate you, and hopefully I'll talk to you all again soon. Have a wonderful evening.